Good morning. Welcome to the Public Accounts Committee. The Public Hearing on Licensing of Food Premises, Chapter Two of Report Number Eighty-One of the Audit Commission. This is the second public hearing. Officials, please be seated. We have with us Mr. Tae Jin Hwan, Secretary for Environment and Ecology, Ms. Irene Young, Director of the Food and Environmental Hygiene Department, FEHD, as well as her team. We will get started with Part Three, Management of Food Business Licenses and Permits. In the last hearing, we have already finished Parts One and Two. I will invite lead member Ms. Carmen Khan to get started ten minutes. So we'll get started with Part Three, right? In the last hearing, we finished Parts One and Two. Do you have any follow-up? Based on the reply from the administration, the administration has already replied to some of the questions proposed by the Secretariat in Gen Two, Three, Four, Five, Gen Two from the HAD, Gen Three from the FSD, Gen Four from the Buildings Department, and Gen Five from the FEHD and the Environment and Ecology Bureau. It is quite detailed. Can I follow up on some of the main points? Yes, please go ahead. Thank you, Chairman. First of all, Gen Two, it is a reply from the Home Affairs Department. It basically is about outside seating accommodation permission, OSA. The Home Affairs Department needs to conduct public consultations. Basically, the HAD replied that they do not agree that the public hearing would impact on the application process. Some examples were cited to make the case that it is not the public consultations that affected the application process in Romanian character three. It is about the room for streamlining public consultation, such as whether there is a need to revise the request for local consultation pro forma. The officials with us are from the Environment and Ecology Bureau, EEB, and the FEHD. I'd like to hear from them about their response by the HAD. Secretary, please. Ms. Irene Young?
Thank you, Chairman. The reply by the HAD mentioned the points brought about by Ms. Carmen Khan. So did public consultation affect the application timeline regarding outside seating accommodation, OSA? Well, the situations vary from one to another. Some application time might be longer because they needed to make different adaptations or amendment or more than one public consultation is involved. In this case, time will be affected. So I'm not in a position to make further explanation on the behalf of the HAD whether this is a general phenomenon or it is only applicable to some cases. We will study with the HAD about streamlining the public consultation process. We have already reached a consensus. We will further enhance the pro forma introduced since two thousand and nine. To be specific, we are required to set down whom we should consult, the scope of consultation, such as which building, which district. However, in fact, for OSA applications, in most cases, we do have clear consultation targets, that is, the people in the community. The scope is also very specific, that is, the building in question or the buildings in its vicinity. So in this case, we do not need to make further clarifications in the pro forma when all these are quite standard. So against this backdrop, we can sanitize the pro forma in order to save the time of exchanging information. Thank you, Director. Ms. Carmen Khan?
After improving district governance, such as four hundred or so district council members, I do want resources to be made use of well. Some members also reflected that when we issue more OSA permissions, this is conducive to tourism and cultural development in Hong Kong. Next, I'd like to follow up on Gen Three, that is, the reply from the FSD. In B, Part Two, some members were concerned when there are unlicensed food premises that are identified by some visits. Members were concerned about fire safety or life safety. Member was also concerned whether there was any mechanism in place to refer to the FSD. The FSD replied that there is no such mechanism in place. There is no referral mechanism between the FEHD and the FSD to handle unlicensed food premises. The FSD also mentioned when breaches have to do with the FSD, they will follow up accordingly. The FSD also welcomes cases being referred to them when there are such cases as unlicensed food premises being identified.
Director? Yes, we have already reached a consensus with the Buildings Department and the FSD. In the future, we might involve more bureau or departments. When we identified an unlicensed food premises, we will refer the case to one another. Carmen Khan? I thank you for your response. This will give citizens peace of mind. When you identified unlicensed food premises, it is the FEHD that identifies it. The referral mechanism to the FSD and the BD plays a key role in safeguarding the life safety and fire safety in the community. Next question about D. It is about the implementation of the electronic referral system by the FEHD. It is expected to be completed by twenty twenty-six, but the FSD has made it clear that it is working on an e issuance of licenses and certificate system. This system will be up and running in the second quarter of this year. So will the FEHD and the FSD work together on this system in order to facilitate the work progress? Yes, indeed, we will. We do have the same goal. All departments would like to digitalize the application process, so where possible, we will roll out these electronic system as soon as possible. We will also exchange the data interfaces platforms. For Gen Four, it is a reply from the Buildings Department, BD. Likewise, it is similar to the reply by the FSD for unlicensed food premises. There is no special referral mechanism in place. In the future, there will be a mechanism being looked at. So I will pursue no further. Next, Gen Five. I am more concerned about Page Three. Well, for the food licenses being withdrawn or canceled, if the application is made within twelve months, the application will not be dealt with. Why is that the case? If someone has hassled her licenses being withdrawn, as long as you do not allow the licenses to be issued when the applicant is the very same one, that will do. This is a policy question. So are you worried that some illegal operators will affect the life safety of citizens when they change to yet another restaurant or premises? Well, thank you for your question. We do want to prevent operators from engaging in the same trade under the demerit point system and warning letter system. They have a higher likelihood of reoffending. So in our opinion, the one-year timeframe is quite a severe punishment. We have already balanced the impact on the trade and the safeguarding of food safety in the community. We put in place this arrangement. Some demerit points are related to premises, such as the hygiene conditions of the premises or in the back alley, there are spots which are not hygienic enough. For example, when one worked um in a restaurant, the hygiene conditions are not satisfactory, but when they apply for another license, such as another food license, such as fresh provision shop license, selling some frozen food, this is considered yet another business. So should we ban the very same person from operating different businesses across the board? This is up for discussion. The Director is present today. She has already promised that she would review the relevant policies. For breaches, when somebody applies for another license on the same premises, the risks are considered higher, but I don't think the likelihood is high. So this provision is not quite meaningful. It does not serve much purpose. One would be more likely to go to yet another premises instead of staying on the same premise, well, premises. We will consider a basket of factors so that the legal provisions do not have to be written down so narrowly. You need to consider a basket of factors and you need to strike a balance, but you do not need to set down in legal provisions, within twelve months on the same premises, this would not be allowed. You do not have to set down to this level of detail.
Director? One comment from me. At the last hearing, another member raised this point too. You have a food business license. You have to go through the demerit point system before the cancellation kicks in. A restaurant needs to have a certain number of demerit points, so that involves repeated violations. This involves food safety. Now, the system bars an operator from applying for a license if it's the same premises, but you, people can simply go to another site and apply for a fresh license. Such operators may be less than responsible. And then people have to wait till the demerit points build up before that business has its license canceled again. Ms. Khan's point is for the government to consider. Yes, we need to be mindful of livelihood, but for licenses of food premises, they also have to ensure food safety. If some operators don't take their licenses seriously and they have their licenses canceled, then they can go to another site and set up a new business. If that's the case, that undermines the deterrence of the licensing system. So can we get a response from Ms. Irene Young or the Secretary, Mr. Tae Jin Hwan?
This is a policy issue, as the Director, Ms. Irene Young, just said. The building structure of the premises may be a factor behind the cancellation, but we know the members' concern. When the cancellation has nothing to do with the building structure, then we will see if something can be done. We will review this point. Ms. Carmen Khan? Now, the points we cover in Part Three may be related to the other points raised in Gen Five. So that's all the questions I have for now. So we have dealt with the points raised in Parts One and Two. So let's move on to Part Three of the Audit Report. Thank you. This has to do with transfer renewal of food business licenses and also the management of provisional food business licenses and performance measurement. There are audit findings on these points. Let's turn to Table Ten. So that's page fifty-two of the English report. This has to do with the figures. The figures are about applications received and processed in the same year. Audit argues this does not reflect the full picture because some applications may be received in the year before and then completed in the year after. But the achievement figures and the average processing time in terms of days are compiled based on the applications received and dealt with in the same year. Audit has recommended a different approach to compiling the figures to ensure greater consistency. I would like a response from the FEHD. Director of the Food and Environmental Hygiene Department, Ms. Irene Young? In compiling of figures for performance standards, we adopt the practice of looking at the applications received and completed in the same year. We do accept audit recommendations. This means we should also factor in the applications received in the year before and completed in the current year. This is similar to a point raised in a similar point, Table Nine, the average processing time for license applications. The FEHD has fully accepted audit recommendations because we think audit has proposed a better approach. Ms. Carmen Khan, thank you. So this means the FEHD will adopt the audit approach. This means there will be a change to the way the figures are compiled. Yes, indeed. Chairman, I will then move on. Paragraph three point nine. This has to do with license transfers. When a petrol filling station is involved, the FEHD is not on the same page as the Fire Services Department. The FSD takes the view that when you have a petrol filling station, that there are safety considerations when you have a food business at a petrol filling station. In this case, doesn't matter whether it's a new application or transfer, the FSD has to be consulted. But then the FEHD takes a different view. So now that we look back at this issue, so it's about a reflection on what, why, why it went wrong and what will be done in the future, Ms. Irene Young? In twenty seventeen, the FEHD set up a mechanism with the FSD. There was a case of miscommunication. The FEHD thought that transfer applications would not have to go to the FSD because it's the same premises. It's just about the transfer from Licensee A to Licensee B. So no change to the premises. That's why the FEHD had taken that view, but later the FEHD found out the FSD took a different view. We learned about this, so we respected the FSD's view. We instructed the FEHD staff if it's an application, doesn't matter if it's a new application or transfer for food business licenses at the petrol filling station, this matter would be referred to the FSD and this arrangement has been in place. Thank you. Three point nine A. Again, this is transfers of licenses and permits. Table One has to do with food business licenses, general restaurants, light refreshment licenses and food factory licenses. Table One sets out figures. In nine working days, a letter of response would be issued to the transferrer. That's the performance pledge. But then in Table Two, it has to do with the other licenses for frozen confectionery, dairy products, cut fruit, etc. When the transfer of these permits are involved, the FEHD has no performance pledges in terms of the number of days it would take before a response is issued. Audit's view is for the FEHD to consider setting a target in the processing time for the restricted food permits. Can we get a response from the FEHD? Chairman, we don't have an open performance pledge, but we do have internal guidelines asking our staff to handle such transfer requests quickly. We plan to do a full review of our guidelines and timeframes to make them more realistic and make life easier for different parties to follow the rules. So that's our plan. Ms. Carmen Khan? When you say you have a plan, doesn't mean there will be clearer performance pledges. Chairman, we will fully review our timescales, performance pledges and guidelines. We will look at how we should phrase these guidelines, etc. Ms. Carmen Khan? We are now focusing on the economy. If there are ways to make life easier for businesses and people, I hope the government can take this opportunity to streamline the arrangements. This includes transferring licenses. When things move faster, businesses will have an easier time. Let's do more on our procedures to make things easier for people. Chairman, I now turn to the provisional food business licenses. So let's find out about this. Provenional food business licenses. It's in paragraph three point two one. The Bureau has told us such licenses are valid for six months. Upon expiry, there will be another six months in grace period. Now, before March first, twenty twenty-three, there were six months, but now, starting from March first last year, the grace period becomes three months. Is it because of COVID that you are shortening the grace period from six months to three months with effect from March first, twenty twenty-three? Is it different from a provisional food business license? Now, for food provisional licenses, applicants have to apply for a full license and a provisional license at the same time. No standalone application for provisional licenses. It will take time for an applicant to meet the full licensing requirements. When it comes to the building safety, hygiene, health requirements are met, we first issue a provisional license. This way, the applicant can run the business while waiting for the full license. This system has worked. Ms. Khan's point is that when the provisional license expires, there is a grace period. The point about the grace period is that we know the applicant has put in resources behind the application for the license. There may be various factors for the applicant to be unable to meet all the requirements for a full license. If we cancel this application, at that point, we may add to the burden for the applicant, and that's uncalled for. That's why we set a grace period. The point is to let the applicant continue with the full license application. Last year, we shortened the grace period from six months to three months. The point was to encourage an applicant to complete the application promptly. This is good for the system, the integrity of the system and public health. Ms. Carmen Khan? When an application comes in for both the full license and the provisional license, when is a provisional license issued? Director? It's a straightforward process for the provisional license. The applicant needs to do their part. It has to meet the requirements in hygiene, fire safety, ventilation and building safety. The essential requirements need to be met. The applicant needs to get an authorized person to confirm that all these requirements are met. Within two months, the provisional license is granted. So what's the difference between a provisional and a full license? What are the differences in the requirements? Now, for the provisional permit, the applicant has to go to an authorized person and meet the four requirements in, or the requirements in four areas. The full license comes with more stringent requirements. The requirements have specified the efficiency or the specification of the exhaust fans. All these detailed requirements need to be met before a full license is granted. Now, I can invite my colleagues to give us further details.
Ms. Carmen Khan? Yes, probably you can explain further. The Secretary said in the opening remarks. Well, licenses can be issued first followed by vetting. So I'd like to know the difference between a full license and a provisional license. For a vetting mechanism, we do need engineers or authorized persons to complete the system. So the trade needs to understand clearly how these can help the trade. So they will understand how they can obtain their licenses for the operation of their business. Ms. Winnie Chow. Thank you. Regarding provisional food business licenses, licensing conditions are much simpler. There are some statistics or figures that may not be set down in provisional licenses. For example, the number of toilets for a larger restaurant and for a smaller restaurant. The number of toilets is different in relation to its requirements. So for provisional licenses, we only require the provision of toilets. But a provisional food business license has to be applied for at the same time with a full license. So there is requirement as to the ratio of male toilets to female toilets. In the application for a full license, after the applicant has complied with all the requirements, such as there need to be tiles on the walls and on the ground, well, I mean on the floor, then the applicant will report to us and the FEHD will conduct a site visit to check whether all the requirements or licensing conditions have already been met. If all go well, we will issued a provisional food business license. That is only when all requirements have been met. What Ms. Carmen can mention is applicable to a full license. The trade, as we observed, is very cooperative. They do want to obtain a full food business license. In the application for a full license, for the submission of documents, layout plans and so on, the applicant or his agent will make these submissions. But for a full license, professionals will also be allowed to submit these documents. The layout plans have to reflect fully the layout of the premises. A certificate will also have to be signed and issued to certify that the premises are in line with the licensing conditions. So the licensing conditions have all been met. Within two weeks, when the layout plans submitted by the professionals are already approved by the relevant bureau or department within two working days, we will issue the license. After which, within seven days after the issuance of license, we will conduct yet another site visit to once again check whether all licensing conditions have been met. And that is the professional vetting mechanism. Staffers will conduct site visits to check whether all the licensing conditions have been met before the issuance of a certificate. The professional certification system is only applicable to a full license application, and it does not undermine our regulation of the regime. All the licensing conditions are the same. It will not be affected by the professional certification system. It is only the process or the procedures that are changed. As Ms. Carmen can said, we do want to streamline the food business licensing system in order to facilitate the application for these licenses, and we proactively wrote out this system. That is because we do want to streamline the system and to allow applicants to better grasp the application status and timeline. When we adopt the professional certification system, the application time will be advanced by two weeks comparing with the traditional approach. That is, the procedures will move faster by two weeks. Ms. Carmen Khan. As I see. So for food factory licenses, it was already in place last March. The secretary said, starting from this quarter, well, I mean from um the first quarter of this year, the profi- uh the professional certification system will be made applicable to general restaurants as well. In twenty twenty-two, there were a total of twelve thousand six hundred and thirty applications. So after the professional certification system is in place, the applicant does not need to apply for provisional and food licenses. Is that the case? He or she only needs to follow the professional certification system. If that is the case, then the administration should promote to the trade to make it clear what kind of licenses can be applied through the professional certification system. Director. Well, the professional certification system is only applicable to food license application. If one wishes to apply for a provisional license, they do need to follow the traditional approach. The professional certification system will only be applic- applicable to a full license application. We have been in touch with the trade. When we extend the system to light refreshment restaurants and food factories, it is well received by the trade and we will keep explaining to the trade and introducing to them the professional certification system. Well, if the PCS applies to both full licenses and provisional licenses, the issuance of licenses will only be faster by two weeks. So can you tell us more about it? Well, director, can you give us a clearer explanation? With the PCS professional certification system, one needs to apply for both a provisional and a full license. They need to obtain both. But then, when you issue the full license, you will use the PCS. Can you tell us what procedures are saved? Or what procedures can be streamlined? That is with the concern of all BDs. Time can be saved. Comparing with the traditional approach, you need to conduct a site visit to vet the premises before you issue the license. Well, thank you, chairman. Let me make it clear. When one wants to apply for a license for general food premises, one can directly apply for a full license without going through a provisional license application. No problem, but then the operator will have to wait until a full license to be issued before they can operate. So some operators will apply for a provisional food business license so that they can start the operation when they have meet uh well, when they meet some simpler arrangements or um requirements. When one has a professional license, at the same time one is applying for a full license, the PCS will kick in. Towards the end of the full license application, basically, the applicant has already met almost all the licensing conditions. There are two avenues. One, for the traditional approach, one can report to the FEHD that one has already met all the licensing conditions, and the FEHD can check whether all the licensing conditions have been met. So within eight to ten working days, we will conduct a site visit to check all the licensing conditions have been met. After which, we will issue a license within seven working days afterwards. For the professional certification system PCS, when the applicant has already fulfilled all the licensing conditions, they do not have to go to the FEHD. They only need to go to structured engineers or the relevant professionals to verify that they have already met all the licensing conditions, proving that they have already met all the ventilation requirements required by the FSD. So within two days, when we are satisfied, all the licensing conditions have been met, this is the approach of issuing license first before checking the premises. This way, we are moving faster. So this is where the difference lies. That is whether the certification system takes the professional approach or the traditional approach. The applicant can still opt for the traditional approach. Both approaches are also acceptable to us. Well, in your view, the adoption of the PCS can save time by two weeks. Is that correct? Yes. Thank you, chairman. My next question is about provisional licensing system. One can choose to apply for a provisional license. In table one, on page four. So for the number of provisional licenses, just one thousand to two thousand, why is that the case? On page four, table one of the document. Why is the number of provisional licenses very much different from that of full licenses? That is, in twenty twenty-two, there were a total of one thousand eight hundred and one provisional licenses. The operators need to submit the applications in tandem. How should I look at the situation? Director. On table one, it shows the situation on the thirty-first of December every year. As provisional food licenses take a shorter time to be issued, it does not affect food license applications. Thanks. We'll come into place when we take a look at table four on page sixteen or page seventeen of the English report. That is for the number of full licenses between three thousand two hundred or so and four thousand or so. Things are clearer now. Thank you. It represents the number of valid licenses. That is for table one. For table four, it is a little bit different. Three thousand three hundred full licenses out of a total of four thousand, so eighty percent of the applications will make an application for provisional food business licenses at the same time. So before a provisional food business license, can the operator still operate? You go.
Director. The operator cannot run the business before getting the provisional license. I refer members to Gen five. In paragraph two point two eight of the audit report, the audit report, before the provisional license is granted, the FEHD prosecuted a business in Two Moon and another in Xinwan. At that point, these two businesses did not have a provisional license, but they started running. They were prosecuted. Still, shortly after the prosecution, on April twenty-first and June sixth, twenty twenty-three, the place in Two Moon was prosecuted. But then, on June twenty-eighth, this place got a provisional license, and that's just twenty days apart from prosecution to getting the license. And then, in the Xinwan case, on June sixth and July fourteenth, this operator was prosecuted. But then, on July twenty-sixth, the operator got the provisional license, and that's just twelve days apart. That undermines deterrence. These operators were prosecuted twice, but then shortly after, the operators got their professional licenses. Can I get a departmental response to this case? And then, in Roman numeral two, on the same page of the reply, the FEHD will review the practices to step up the effort against unlicensed operations. Can we have more details on this point? Director, Ms. Irene Young. Say, a new application comes in for a restaurant. The district licensing office deals with the application. The case is referred to the district environmental hygiene office. The DEHO looks out for unlicensed operations. There are weekly inspections. So that's on the radar for us. So there are enforcements for the cases mentioned in the audit report. We prosecute when we see irregularities. The case goes to the court. We also report our observations to the court. When the business keeps running, there are daily penalties under the law. The spirit of the law is that the illegal operation may go on for more than one day. So the penalty applies not just to the discovery of the operation, but also for the continuing breach. I talked to my colleagues. We need to step up the effort to combat unlicensed food businesses that have yet to obtain a provisional license. So the plan we have in mind is this. Say, an applicant has yet to receive a provisional license and it has started running the business. We're looking at an administrative measure to reject the food business license application at that point. Doing this could create a deterrent effect. So this is the plan we refer to in the reply. That is Gen five. We will also step up public education and publicity. We already have this on our website, showing the licensed food businesses. There's a list people can refer to. But we want to make the list more user-friendly and help the public stay alert. We want to help the public And help the public stay alert, we want to help the public tell which premises are unlicensed. We want to set up a page where we put all the information on the same site. For people to tell the licensed businesses from the unlicensed ones. So we also want to encourage the public to inform us about the unlicensed businesses so that we can act. We work closely with the FSD and the BT, we have reached a consensus. If one department comes across an unlicensed food business, that department will let the other departments know. We take this multi-pronged approach to combat the situation. Indeed, the departments should step up the work. Operators should not start running the business without getting the provisional license. It's not ideal when a rule breaker simply pays a fine and can get the license all the same. We need to show these rule breakers that there are serious consequences. And they cannot expect to get lucky by trying to run a business without a license. Miss Kam and Khan, I don't just go online to check whether a food business has a license. We count on the department to act as the gatekeeper. Audit has uncovered the two cases. But these two cases might be just the tip of the iceberg. Chairman, as you said, there are rule breakers. They have crunch math, they price in the fines. In that case, the licensing regime fails to protect public health, and that's also unfair to the players who play by the rules. If an operator is found to breach the rules, they should be denied the license, and that's how we can achieve a deterrent effect. That's all the questions I have for this part. We move come to Mister Edmund Wong. Thank you Chairman. I want to follow up on a point in Gen Five. Miss Khan just asked about the point I have in mind, it's about the two cases. The two cases were prosecuted. Paragraph two point two eight in the audit report says that as said August twenty twenty-three. No documentary proof shows the DEHOs involved acted. What happened? In June and July, there were prosecutions, but Audit said as at August. Nothing on the documents said the prosecutions happened. What happened? Running an unlicensed food business. Is prosecuted, but not by the licensing officers. The nineteen DEHOs. Once they come across irregularities, act by prosecuting the unlicensed operations. An applicant files an application for a food business license. The licensing officers deal with the licensing application. The RLOs also alert the DEHOs right away about the ongoing license application. So that the application gets on the radar of the DEHOs. So two things are moving in tandem. The application is being dealt with, the application also becomes part of the regulatory radar of the DEHOs. So it's not like we have to wait till the RLOs to do an inspection and they spot the irregularity and only then the DEHOs act. From the get-go, the case comes on the radar of the DEHOs. There is continuous monitoring and the DEHOs prosecute irregularities. So that's what happened with the case in paragraph two point two eight. We also have internal guidelines to step up liaison between RLOs and DEHOs. When our licensing officers spot irregularities. The case is alerted to the nineteen DEHOs right away. But even without this referral system. Our regulatory officers continue to do their regulatory work on an ongoing basis. The DEHOs are under the FEHD. The Audit has found no document about the prosecution. Has this been talked about with Audit? The Audit Report says there's been no documentary proof showing prosecution. There is inconsistency in what went on. So within the FEHD, one office didn't work, but there was a coordination issue. Why wasn't this clarified with the Audit Commission during the Audit? Chairman, let's look at the Two Moon case, one day after the site visit. The food business got the professional license. In August, there was no longer a need for the referral because the DEHO involved. Found out about the food business. Audit said there was no documentation. Audit came to the FEHD, has the FEHD told Audit that another office has handled the matter? Chairman, the staff may not have explained things perfectly clearly. So that's why Audit said there was no documentation, they thought FEHD did not act. Has the FEHD explained the matter? I can invite my colleague who was in touch with Audit at the time to tell us more. Mister Wen. Senior Superintendent, we talked to Audit about this, we explained the circumstances. Audit's view was that our licensing team. Should have referred the case to the DEHO. Mister Edmund Wong. Chairman, I find the departmental response disappointing. If the department saw something off about the audit assessment, they should have raised the matter. Audit doesn't have, or rather doesn't dictate everything that goes into the audit report. The department may have an internal procedure to deal with the matter, so this matter should be raised with Audit. So my question is for Audit, when the department doesn't agree with something in the audit report, can the department raise the matter with Audit? This is a question for Audit. Now for the case in paragraph two point two eight, can Audit tell us more about how Audit talked to the FEHD about this case? Chairman, I thank you and the member for the questions, for our procedure. Before the audit report comes out, there are at least two rounds. When the report is circulated with the department. The department, in this case, the FEHD looked at the draft and they were fine with the report. I don't know what we were told orally, but there was no document showing what happened. From what we could see from the written papers, we saw nothing. So let's see if there's anything from the department, Mr. Edmund Wong, indeed, we need the documents as proof. Something happened orally. The department said they talked to Audit, but the Audit Commission said that wasn't good enough. And the report came out, there was no objection from the department, and it's only when we came to the public hearing. And it's only in Gen Five, the FEHD told us what happened, it's only in a follow-up reply. These are open documents accessible to the public. As the Director of Audit said, it's the documents that count. Anything that's done should be reflected in the document. If work was done and people thought no action was taken, that would be unfair to the document, because people may take that view. What can be done about this? The DEHO may have done the work, it's there a mechanism to ensure the DEHO did the work. The DEHO and the RLO are under the same department. When there was no information about whether a case was referred, even within the same department, what can be done to improve the procedure?
Director, Miss Yang. Well, for the first referral. There is definitely the first referral. When the application is made for the first time. The regional licensing office will definitely refer the case to the district environmental hygiene office. Then the DEHO will monitor the situation. And will act accordingly if there is any non-compliance. For two point two eight, as I understand. That is for the site visit conducted together with the Audit Commission. Was it referred to the DEHO for follow-up? This is the difference, as I understand, it is not the case that there has been no referral whatsoever. That is whether the case was further referred to another department upon the site visit. As at August twenty twenty-three, there was no document showing that there were any follow-up actions. So we do not dispute the fact as set down in paragraph two point two eight. So when you conducted a site visit together with Audit, Audit gave you this recommendation, did you refer? The case to the nineteen DEHOs under the FEHD? Or was it a regular practice that even without you refer the case to the DEHO, they are already working on it? Is that the case? Yes. When the colleagues are already working on this. And if you, if you had made it clear to the Audit Commission, then they wouldn't have written these details down this way. Had you written a letter to the Audit Commission setting out the situation, we wouldn't have seen two point two eight in this report. You could have improved the situation. Yes, whether members or the Audit Commission, we do want to enhance the mechanism. Is this mechanism still effective if there is a change in manpower? This is exactly what we want to deal with. I'd like to follow up. On the case in June. That is one day afterwards, a license was issued, hence no prosecution. You're an enforcement department after all, when you identified non-compliances. Who makes the decision to press ahead with prosecution? Or was it because one day afterwards and a license was issued, so there wasn't any prosecution? That is because for the day before that, still the restaurant was operating without license. Have you obtained any legal advice from the Department of Justice DOJ? Has it provided you with any reference? Before we carry our prosecution, we do need to comply with our power conferred upon us. We do need to take into account resources as well. When colleagues knew that there were non-compliances. There was already prosecution, so on the twenty-first of April and the sixth of June. That food restaurant premises were prosecuted. There was actually more than one non-compliance. When we conducted site visits. And when we identify multiple non-compliances or continuous non-compliances, we will also inform the court of the applicable daily fine. For those starting to operate without obtaining a professional food business license, we conduct weekly inspections. And the results will definitely be reported to the court and we will press ahead with prosecution. We don't tolerate any of these non-compliances. There was a time when prosecution was effective. As non-compliances were observed. Well, I mean, there, there was once a time when there were no, um, non-compliances. So the FEHD will definitely not. Pause any prosecution when we identified any non-compliance. We will factor in our resources and manpower before making the prosecution decision, we will also consider the case. That is whether there is continuous non-compliance. Mister Edmund Wong, I understand what the administration said, but in the last hearing, that is on the twelfth of December. During that public hearing. At twelve thirty PM. The Director of Food and Environmental Hygiene reported. That a site visit was conducted on the twenty-third of June together with the Audit Commission. On the very same day, the premises already obtained a provisional food business license. Hence, no prosecution was needed. Are you referring to the very same incident? Well, I have already explained the referral mechanism. We don't carry out prosecution just because of one single site inspection. Prosecution work has been going on continuously. So did you carry out any prosecution work on the twenty-seventh of June when you conducted a site visit with the Audit Commission? Or did you consider it not necessary? We have already explained that there is a standard frequency of inspections, for example, once per week. So, the last time we carried out prosecution was the sixth of June. Afterwards, we didn't carry out any prosecution. But this has nothing to do with the fact that there is no referral after our site visit, this is not the case. But when you didn't press ahead with prosecution, that operator was still operating the business without license. In this case, why didn't you prosecute the operator? After all, that operator was running the business illegally without a license. Well, we do have our arrangements. I probably need to invite my colleagues to tell you more about the situation. Mister Wen, Senior Superintendent, thank you Chairman. I'd like to supplement on the Two Moon case, on the sixth of June. I'd like to supplement on the two moon case, on the sixth of June. We prosecuted the operator. On the thirteenth and the twentieth of June, the R uh while the D E H O officers. Went to the site and checked that the operator was still running the business. Between that day and the twentieth of June, there were daily fines. Well, I don't have information at hand right now, but on the twenty eighth of June, when uh when license was issued. If we do not take into account the daily fines between the sixth and the twenty seventh of June. The site visit was conducted on or after the twenty eighth of June. So when we found that a license had already been issued on the twenty eighth of June. The fines between the sixth and the twenty seventh of June were not counted. Well, the department does not have sufficient information, so I don't know how I should follow up on the situation. But after all, there were great discrepancies. On the twenty eighth of June, the administration said that the license had already been issued to the operator, so. No prosecution against the operator has been brought. For the period between the sixth and the twenty seventh of June. That is like when I was arrested for driving without, without um a license. But then the day afterwards, I already passed a driving test, then I was found to be not unlawful when I. Um even if I. Drove before the day when I obtained a driving license. As Ms. Carmen Khan said, the threshold was already low enough. If the fines and the consequences were still very light. That is when one operator can move to yet another address, so how can we safeguard the safety of the community? This is a very important point, well, I have no further questions. Director, do you have anything else to add? Well, I apologize if I did not explain well enough. So there was any misunderstanding. Well, I'd like to emphasize. That in monitoring unlicensed food restaurants or food businesses, we do have our established procedures and risk assessments as well as frequencies. To carry out inspections, we definitely do not tolerate any unlicensed food business, it is not the case. It is not the case that we do not carry out prosecution when the operator obtains license after operating illegally. From the perspective of citizens. If a restaurant operates without a license, they should be held accountable. Even if they obtain a license afterwards. They still need to be punished. This is what you need to think. As the secretary said, you would review the mechanism. That is without, uh well, I mean before obtaining license. Will that have a bearing on the issuance of license in the future? Otherwise, people or citizens may think that these operators can get away with only a fine. Confidence in food safe, in food safety might be undermined, the secretary has already um. Said that and probably you would like to think about it. For the public hearing of the P A C, we do want to uncover the truth of the situation and improve the efficiency of different bureaus and departments. In paragraph two point two eight, there is no documentation to show this. You only tell us that there was actually some proof in the public hearing on the last occasion. On the uh well, twelfth of December, you also said the same, you said that. There wasn't any follow up as you issued license of that day, today on the fifth of January. When I asked about the Gen five document, you only answered me the periodic review was in place. No prosecution was carried out just because the operator obtained license afterwards. It is difficult to. Deal with this situation well or deal with this problem just during the meeting today. But I'd like to have a chronological order of the event, what happened in between, I believe this is. An individual case and I believe this case. Might be a common one, it might be a common occurrence, so how can we enhance the mechanism to protect the incre- the integrity of the procedures? That is not fair to the department either. In the past, every seven to eight days. You conduct a site visit. So when you find that there is no um. Reason to carry a prosecution, you should write it down in the record. Officers should not be held accountable. When there is no prosecution, when the DOJ asks you, you simply tell them the officers did not mention it, that is not fair to the officers. You could have written it down in the S O P, if this is a conventional practice, you should form, you should formalize it. In the S O P, I have no further comments, I hope the administration can supplement on this point. That is what exactly happened in this case, thank you.
Director, can you provide us with papers after the meeting? Yes, next Mister Louis Long. Thank you Chairman. It's a question about records. Paragraph three point three, table ten. From twenty eighteen to twenty twenty two. Food business license transfers. Received from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty two, the notes to table ten. Says that the number of transfers completed in each year may include the applications received in the previous year or years. Some applications may not be completed within the same year. Paragraph two point three five of the report. Sets out the average processing time for new applications. The F E H D adopt a different criterion. They look at just the applications received and completed in the same year. Why two different criteria for these figures? Director. Paragraph two point three five, we. Adopted audit recommendation, in the past, we. Looked at just the applications received within the same year and completed in the same year. But going forward, we will look at the applications received before the current year for a full picture. So going forward. License applications, transfer applications, we will adopt the same standard, Mister Long. So there will be a consistent practice in the future, yes. Another question about the record, just then Ms. Carmen Khan also raised this question. This has to do with the petrol filling stations, the F E H D is not on the same page as the F S D on applications involving. P F S's, this matter has been sorted out. From January twenty eighteen to October twenty twenty three. How many cases were there? How many cases were not referred to the F S D? If these cases were not referred to the F S D, will they be referred to the F S D so that the F S D will have all the records? Director, I don't have the figures at hand. Paragraph three point ten deals with this issue, it's a very specific issue. Transfer or renewal of licenses within P F S's. The F H D had a misunderstanding. We can provide information after the meeting. On the number of cases that were not referred to the F S D in that timeframe. Mister Long. I need more than the number, I want to know the follow up action too. The cases were not referred to the F S D back then, will they be referred to the F S D so that the F S D gets the full record? Yes, we can provide the information. The licenses and permits are renewable for one year. So our current practice is to refer all such cases to the F S D. Ms. Yang, can you wait till my cue before you start speaking, otherwise the camera cannot focus on you. Mister Long, I know the F E H D has adopted the right practice now. But my focus is that back then there was a time when cases were not referred to the F S D when they should. Will the F E H D refer those cases to the F S D so the F S D can refer, can have a full record? Director, yes, Mister Long, my last question has to do with paragraph three point one five. Audit came across an application for a food business license. The corporate licensee was dissolved before the renewal. So the licensee was not supposed to be eligible for the renewal. But the renewal was successful. Paragraph three point two oh. Says that the F E H D plans to enhance the renewal procedures by requiring corporate licensees and permittees to confirm in the application form. That the company registration is still valid. There will be risk-based verification checks. By risk-based verification checks. What will be done? Ms. Irene Young. This measure. Will guard against the case referred to in paragraph three point fifteen. So we will ask the corporate licensee or permittee to confirm the validity of their company registration. So there is statutory duty. The F E H D also conducts risk-based verification checks, so we do spot checks. To see if the company registration is indeed still valid. We should be able to find the information on the website of the company registry, Mister Louis Long. I want to find out what risk-based means, so you do spot checks. How can the department tell the high-risk cases from those at a lower risk? Are there criteria to go on? What are the criteria behind this risk-based approach? Director. To make good use of resources, we don't check every single case. Because the licensees or permittees have to file a statutory declaration, that's level one, and then level two, we do spot checks. We will be more stringent at first. We will see if there is room for relaxation, we will look at how. Things are with the breaches and then we adjust the criteria from time to time, Mister Louis Long. So it's an iterative process. You do a round of checks. You look at the results. You look at the number of breaches. And then you recalibrate the way. The cases are checked. Director, yes, Mister Long. So this is not the ordinary meaning of a risk-based approach. Anyway, I get the point now, that's all from me, Mister Edmund Wong, a follow-up question. For chapter three, three point one five. So permittees and licensees have to declare. That the company registration is still valid going forward, now let's come back to three point fifteen. The corporate licensee was dissolved and it got the, its license renewed all the same, what can be done? In terms of the procedure to prevent this kind of incident from happening. Director, we did not have a verification system or guidelines for our staff to guard against that. On the specifics of the case, my colleague can elaborate on that, who will take the question, please Mister Wen? This involved a corporate licensee. In a renewal application. Under the old regime. The applicant did not have to submit corporate documents to our counterstaff for verification. The licensee signed a document indicating its wish for license renewal, our staff received the form and processed the application. Something was not ideal with that system, that's why we will add this requirement about the statutory declaration and there will be spot checks, Mister Edmund Wong. In April twenty nineteen, the corporate licensee was dissolved. But then in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, the renewal went through. Now the department will have a risk-based system, does it involve the use of false instruments? There were flaws with the system when something went wrong, now the department will require a statutory declaration. To confirm the validity of company registration. Now moving forward. There will be a declaration, but what else would there be in terms of checks and balances to make sure the corporate licensee is still in existence? Director, we will require a declaration, we will also do spot checks to verify the declarations. The false declarations attract criminal liability. You can pursue the culprit by legal means, but my question is, what can the department do procedure wise? On top of the declaration, what more can the department do? To ensure the corporate licensee is still in existence, this may be a licensee incorporated overseas. Say this may be incorporated in the UK or the British Virgin Islands, the department may struggle to verify the incorporation. In this case, the practical way is to rely on a declaration from the licensee. But in Hong Kong, we have an open and transparent system, what would the department do? Here is an idea, you can go to the company's registry for a check. No document needed to be submitted. Latest business registration, even a B R C isn't good enough, a B R C is good for three years, the company may close tomorrow. In that case, a valid B R C is still available, so what can the department do to ensure the corporation still exists? Department. Department.
Yes, Director. How do you make sure that the sample checks are accurate? Well, we'll go to the company's registry to make verifications. Right now, we can go to the company's regist- registry website to verify. If the corporates have, have already been dissolved, it will also be shown online. What about the companies or overseas? We don't run into these cases as often, but we will continue to look into it. That is how we can handle the situation more effectively. Mr. Edmund Wong just now mentioned that you needed to um check the companies, especially those overseas as soon as possible. While these are not common occurrences, but it is not rare for the body corporates of restaurants to be registered overseas. Do you have any figures about the um registration place? Some do not want to meet licensing conditions in Hong Kong. That is exactly why they go overseas to make the registration. As the director said, have you considered what you can do in order to uh deal with the situation when the companies are registered overseas? This is not a rare occurrence. The administration said that they wanted to, or they plan to go to the company's registry. So that means there is no mechanism in place right now. After the audit commission has checked the situation, right now we have a public hearing and the administration is here with us responding to our queries. If there is still no mechanism in place, there is still room for improvement. I hope the administration can give us a reply. Secretary, no problem. We'll get in touch with the department concerned and then we will come back to the PAC. Next, Ms. Carmen Khan. Writing on the questions asked by the two members, the two, well, the administration can probably give it some thought. Asking the applicant to make a declaration, this may be one of the ways forward. But if we just rely on one single declaration, it's like that the responsibility is passed to the applicant. When the declaration is false, then that person will be held legally accountable. Whether the food business premise is operating legally, that is important. That is why Mr. Louis Long asked you what risk-based means. The administration always wants to work on CDI, commercial data interchange. The administration wants to have a one-stop platform or a portal for citizens to check whether an operator has um a valid license. That is, we can do it through digitalization. Among departments, there can be digitalization and there can also be digitalization between a department and applicants. Can we implement CDI? Or consented data exchange gateway? Regarding paper trail in three point two seven. For provisional licenses, when the grace period can be extended, there is no record. So to the public, a provisional license is provisional. A grace period that runs for three months. Well, that is a three-month grace period. That is very clear. When there is no documentation on the justification for the extension of the grace period, that is the problem. This shows that we are not serious about the grace period. Any response from the administration? Director, we agree with the audit commission. Indeed, it is not ideal if we lack a documentation system. So we'll require colleagues to document the justification clearly if a provisional license is given an extension of a grace period. So can you tell us the reasons why the grace period was extended? There wasn't any justification back then. But if I ask you right now, can you give us any reasons? I asked my colleague about this case as well. For the case in three point two seven, at that stage, when we informed the applicant of the end of the grace period, soon afterwards, we received a document from the applicant about the amendment of the layout plan. That is, they asked about further time to amend layout plan. That is why the grace period was extended. The second case was the same. We identified two cases that took longer time and the situation was similar. So the takeaway for the administration is that this situation was not ideal. You're only documenting the justifications by your memory. There wasn't any record back then. So you didn't know the reasons why the grace period was extended. I don't want to see this happening once again. Next. On the performance measures, in three point three two and three point three six, the audit commission mentioned um performance measures. The controlling officer's report is a very important document. That is a report to the legislative council and the public about the work, as well as the performance. The report sets a one hundred percent of achievement rate. I'd like to know why the achievement would be one hundred percent when the performance measures were not met. We attach great importance to it as well. That is why we review comprehensively two fronts. On the first front, that is why we can't meet the performance pledge. On the second front, if indeed the performance pledge cannot be met, why wasn't it reported properly? These are very close to our heart. So we are conducting a comprehensive review. As many cases and officers are involved, we do need some time. We attach particular importance to controlling officer's report. This is a very important document. For the criteria in the report, we have some preliminary findings. We reviewed every single case and we found that there was a difference of one percentage point. But we haven't yet finished the process and we will continue to work on it. We'll enhance manpower training, staff training, internal guidelines, monitoring on different fronts in order to make improvements. Overall, from our observations and findings, there are a couple of reasons why there was a delay. One, colleagues did not have a full grasp of the guidelines or indicators. Basically, they um think that even if they are one day behind, they still think that they are meeting the criterion. The performance pledge is still met. Well, we will definitely set the record straight. Some are errors made by the officers. There are clerical errors. Some record was not comprehensive. So we do want to solve these problems with the licensing management information system. All the record of the correspondences and the receipt of the document as well as communication with different departments, all these should be properly and clearly documented on the system. This can prevent clerical errors or any missing or incorrect reporting of data. We do want to make improvements in the future. Ms. Carmen Khan? Thank you, Chairman. The controlling officer's report is indeed very important. When there's anything that is not in line with um the actual situation, we should deal with the situation seriously. Otherwise, people may think that the controlling officer's report is not accurate. Or the administration is moving the goalpost. In three point three two, the current practice is that the headquarters division of the FHD will submit report based on the information submitted by RLOs and DEHOs. So for the submission of the documents submitted to the headquarters division, some errors may come in place. Officers in the DEHO may think that even if they are probably one day behind, they are still meeting their performance pledge. So will the use of digitalization eradicate these problems? So that the controlling officer's report can be a trustworthy document. The administration should seriously ponder over this problem. You should give us a serious reply, Secretary. We attach a lot of importance to this issue as well. As members mentioned, the accuracy of the information in the controlling officer's report is very important. So we'll task the FHD with a comprehensive review. If we find any non-compliance, we will definitely take disciplinary actions. Next, about the renewal of licenses. In three point one four, a full food business license is valid for twelve months. Subject to no cancellation or revocation as a result of accumulation of demerit points or breaches of licensing requirements. Is it the case that all points have been deducted so that a license cannot be renewed? Is that the case? In Gen five, on page sixteen S, a license is renewed for twelve months. Some applicants may, well, some applicants may waste their application fees as they will not be returned to the applicant. But have you considered that some applicants may want to apply for a longer renewal license?
Director. Now the first point. Whether having enough demerit points or warning letter will disqualify an applicant from renewal. Renewal is still possible, but the demerit points or warning letters will be carried forward. Now the renewal. On whether longer renewal periods are possible. We touched on this at the last public hearing. We did give thought to this option. We talked to the trade. The trade does not see a major need for longer renewal periods. After all, it's simple to renew a license. If we do two or three-year renewals and a restaurant falls in a period, the operator cannot recover the license fees. So we have struck a balance and we don't see such a need. We're not ruling out this idea. If we find this appropriate, we can consult and consider this option in the future. Ms. Khan? Thank you. All good for me. Ms. Yoonas Yoon. Let's come back to three point one four. Renewal for twelve months. The departmental response is about the statutory limit up to twelve months. But there is no flexibility. The department said the in, the trade is not interested in a longer period. But the trade wonders whether automatic renewal is possible. That's still in line with the law. It's still twelve months for renewal. The department has not given the trade this flexibility. There are economic problems. We want to bring in more towards how can we further streamline renewal. There is room for giving the trade greater flexibility. I'm not perfectly happy with the department response. This response shows rigid thinking and this fails to take account of Hong Kong's actual circumstances. Can we have other administrative measures? That meet the legal requirement but also allow flexibility for the trade? That's my comment. I hope the department can also do better in its response. This is not reflected in the reply under bracket S. Now I turn to three point two two. Other members asked about this. Possible abuse of provisional licenses. The department told us if it's the same premises, same kind of business, the license won't be granted. But the chairman has also asked if the same operator moves to a different place, will the license be granted? Apparently, the license will be granted. So these problematic operators can stay in business. Is there control on rule breakers that move to a different location? Will licenses be granted all the same? What would be done on the regulatory front, Director? On the point about same premises and same business nature, I have explained the thinking behind that. But as the secretary said, we keep all options on the table. We're willing to explore and consider whether this is the best way forward. Ms. Yoonas Yoon. Is that about three point two two? Yes, licensing. When the license is canceled. Multiple applications for provisional licenses. Three point two two is about possible abuse. I don't see how that reply is related to my question, Director. Three point two two is about the current situation. The member wondered if our approach is appropriate. We can look at that, Ms. Yu. Can the department clarify? To guard against abuse of de- To guard against abuse of the provisional license system, starting from twenty oh six, the F E H D has put in place measures. This includes rejecting application for a professional license. Made by a person who has been issued with a professional food business license. Of the same business nature at the same premises within three years from the expiry of that professional license. So my question is. What is being done to curb this kind of abuse? When repeated applications come in, how can the government tell? What's the mechanism? Director. Say a new license application comes in. It goes to the D E H Os. They check whether professional licenses were given or granted to the same applicant. That's how we tell whether a provisional license was granted. If the full license application did not go through in the past. Then the measure under paragraph A of three point two two would kick in. This means within three years of the expiry of the previous provisional license. The professional license applications that come in will be rejected. And now come to three point one four. It has to do with Gen five. Will the government, the department. Undertake to review or study. The option of greater flexibility. So longer renewal periods, for example, or automatic renewal. You can stay within the one-year limit. You give a one-year renewal automatically, so that's a de facto two-year license. Can this be done? Director, we already have a simple renewal process in place. Late last year. For some food business licenses and permits, we launched an online platform, so it's a straightforward process. One thing we need to bear in mind is that. For restaurants, light refreshment provisions and food factory or factory canteens. These places have to meet fire safety rules. Annual checks are needed. And this check cannot be avoided, Miss Young. We're talking about premises that have not had their licenses canceled because of breaching. requirements. The department is being stubborn. I'm not asking for an instant rule change. I'm asking for a study of this option. There were many license applications. My approach can help lessen the workload when we have automatic renewals. That means you can free up resources for inspections or liaison with other departments. We're trying to reduce the workload. So that departments will see greater efficiency. So we're considering these different factors. I'm inviting the department to promise a review or a study. If a promise, even a promise cannot be made, I don't see how we can move ahead, Secretary. We can review this with the department. Miss Young, no other questions. Mister Michael Look. Thank you, Chairman. Three point three two to three four. Performance reporting. Now some figures, let's say a hundred percent achievement, but it turns out this is not the case. So people will suspect inflated achievement figures. There's also reference to making use of technology. To improve reporting. So a question about the current practice. Do people enter the figures manually? How are the figures compiled? Case management systems are widely used in the business world. Licensing is all about the procedure. There is supposed to be a system. That sends out reminders, alerts at different stages. Boxes have to be checked and then you move on to the next step. There should be an entire workflow with the system. Is there no such system with the F E H D? Now, before we get to the response from a department, we were supposed to end the meeting at eleven A M. If this works for the government, I would like to extend the meeting. Members would like to be able to wrap up this chapter today. After the response to Mister Look's questions given, we will take a short break and then we'll get to the final part of this chapter. Director. Before twenty twenty three, we had an electronic system. To record the milestones and procedures of cases, but that system relied on manual inputting. When you do manual input, errors are bound to happen. That explains the errors in details. That's why in May twenty twenty three, we rolled out the Licensing Management Information System two. This system is for new applications. With this system. All correspondence and new applications are processed through the L M I S. So instead of just an electronic record of everything that happened, we have a system that manages the workflow. We expect to see fewer errors. L M I S two also features alerts and reminders of deadlines. The case managers and their bosses receive the alert, so the new system will help us monitor case progress. The new electronic system is expected to help avoid the errors from manual input. The system can also help save time and avoid inaccuracies, Mister Michael Look. Other systems that automate some processes, say a deadline comes, a reminder letter is generated automatically. And then you can find some junior clerical staff to post the letter. In that case, you don't have to get an officer to work on the case. Are there cases of automation with the new system, Director? Yes, there are deadline reminders with the new system. At the milestones, the system reminds the staff. Apart from the L M I S two, there are other ways for us to alert the applicants. The applicant. If the applicant provides a mobile phone number or an email address. We send out email or S M S alerts to remind the applicant.
Mister Michael Look, well, I have no follow-up. Thank you, Chairman. For part three, if members have no further questions, let's take a break for ten minutes. At ten minutes past eleven, we will get started with part four of this chapter. Thank you.